First time I never think about buying my home here. So you've got my dedication and my service. And I'm just looking forward to serving and hopefully I'll get your vote to continue the tradition and keep our community the way Louisville is.
This kind of tricky question. I think I'm gonna kind of reiterate something that Fred was emphasizing. You know, the thing I think I bring to the table here is the one thing that you can't learn, that's experience. And that's learned through successes, mistakes. When I first was elected to office, I thought, well, okay, I've learned a lot over the years. But the experience is the king. And this election's gonna be pivotal because no matter how the vote goes, you're gonna have a forum of the council, including the mayor, who never held office in the time of Louisville. And there are many fine people up here. But again, I think that the question is, what do I think I can bring? It's 31 years of doing the job. It's 31 years of being on boards and committees, civic club, town council, all of those things. And so I would like to bring that back again and hopefully work with this new group, which I'm excited to do.
What I think makes me different from the group up here is leadership. I own my own business. I work a full-time job. I teach Travis education. Now, if you ever try to teach your kids how to drive 14 and a half years old, that's something. That's something. You gotta have patience. You gotta have, you gotta have stamina. You have to have everything. But that's what I bring. That's what I think I bring. Leadership, patience, confidence, and if I have your vote, this is what I'm bringing to the table. Okay?
Well, I'm gonna reiterate kind of what Tom and Fred said 100%. It's nice to have a lot of experience. And I've had one term, which has given me some experience. But what I can tell you is, I've served on a ton of boards and I've been president of a lot of those boards. And I've learned over the years, you've gotta work with people. And I'm not gonna try to throw this out there. I just wanna say, you know, one thing is, you know, when you're on town council, and the mayor made a good point one time about this, he said streets, sewer, water, sidewalks, they don't pick sides. And so, you know, you really, I can collaborate well with whoever gets on. I'm a very easy person to get along with. So that's what I bring to the table. I'm easy to work with. I've got experience. My degree puts an emphasis in finance.
What do I bring to the table? I worked part-time at an accounting firm for several years, so I'm familiar with budgets and financial reports, a trait not to be overlooked here in Winston-Salem, Forsyth County. I have a long history with the town as a resident and a business owner. I was a founding board member of United Health Centers. That's a family-qualified health center in Winston-Salem. A very small group of us, family medicine people and Baptist, neighborhood leaders. We worked for 10 years to get the doctor's office open. And recently, they delivered $6.2 million in healthcare.
Ingenuity, tenacity, and a drive to really serve this community that I'm in. And as I see my wife and our son walking together, and I see our son that is coming in December grumbling on our sonograms from the doctor's office, I'm thinking of a future for them and the community that they're gonna grow up in. And so, I also bring with me a decade's worth of experience from the private sector, sales, marketing, e-commerce for companies like PepsiCo, Keller Williams Realty, and Lexington Home Brands. And so, with all of the forward-thinking and innovation that those companies have inspired, I bring that same energy, the same vision to council. And hopefully, we can build a future for Louisville and for its citizens that we're all proud of.
What I bring to town council would be lifelong experience with construction, both from a superintendent, how to build it, to a project manager, and how to manage it. And we have a $25 million beauty project going on right now. I could take a look at the schedule. I could walk the job and tell you whether they're gonna make it or not, which is important information. But another pet project I would like to bring back, the fireworks. If you guys have looked here long enough, my wife and I, Kathy Greg Womper, she used to be Kathy Olive, she graduated from West Forsyth. We used to go out to the Lowe's shopping center, set up our little chair, and we'd watch the fireworks. And we did that religiously every year. And then, if you remember the low altitude year where nobody could see the fireworks because where you used to sit, you couldn't see it. And then, all of a sudden, they're gone. And I know if the Dash, if the Dash can do it every weekend, we can do it here. Thanks.
Yes. What I bring to the table for this role, I think I'll break it down into four levels. Currently, I serve with, I work with a mass visual agency called The Pull-Over Group. We support 150 financial planners and their practices in North and South Carolina. What I always say is that we are the A to Z, helping them to navigate the ups and downs of their business, the same way they do for their clients and their finances. That's what a citizen of a town needs from the mayor. There will be good days, there will be bad days, there will be hiccups along the way. But I think a mayor is a person that really can find out what's important to your citizens and really pay attention and listen and make sure to provide a clear solution to put them in the best spot for success. Also am a leader that can bridge gaps for generations in our town. And also, I think I'm the best leader to protect the town from any conflicts of interest, from any politicians in Raleigh who are certain people still.
What a great group of people up at this stage. I really like these people. I'm not better than them, but this is what I bring to the table. These are the things that I've done. I'm very aggressive. I'm very focused on being your mayor. And let me tell you, I've met with everybody on the town council, several of them multiple times, town manager. I've met individually with every legislative representative, senator, congressman of our area. I've met with folks from the utility commission. Had breakfast at 7:30 this morning with somebody. I'm a student of what needs to be done here in Louisville. And I'm not afraid of being the person to make that phone call and sit down with those people. Had a great, I've really had a great opportunity to meet with everybody on town council as well. They've been very informative, very helpful. But that's what you get from Kevin Sharp. I'm gonna go to work for you. I'm gonna do my homework and provide good product.
You already answered it.
No.
Great, we'll begin with you with the next one. In addition to the elections for mayor and town council coming up, there is a referendum on the ballot to approve or not to approve staggered terms from two-year terms to staggered four-year terms. Do you support the proposed charter amendment? If so, why have not I have?
First, I have to quickly, excuse me, the answer to your first question is I do not support it and I want to vote no for that referendum. The reason being is when this town was founded, in our charter, what was put in with everybody being elected every two years has worked. I think that the fact that suddenly seven municipalities, small municipalities of Forsyth County have had partisan elections, that our current council had a knee-jerk reaction and put this on the ballot with a 4-2 vote, a split vote. And three of those council members that voted to put it on the ballot are not even on the ballot that's accounted for this referendum. So I ask you, do not vote yes on this, and vote no.
Well, I can kind of see both sides of it. I mean, I think that for continuity's sake, it makes sense to have people so there's not, you know, some four-year terms and some two-year terms. So there's not a complete turnover like is what's happening right now. I can't say what my decision is gonna be because I have not made that decision. I haven't given enough thought to it to really, but I appreciate Fred, what you just said. You have that experience and what you've gone through. So I'm not sure how I'm gonna vote, so I can't advise anybody else how to vote, but I'm leaning towards having it staggered, so there's not a whole turnover every two years.
So this is not something that I've, that I can say that I've been involved with as far as like needing to know like information and feedback from the community. I just haven't found any information on this. But what I can tell you is, I have been through enough of the meetings. I've seen the way that the, this current council, the town staff, how everyone works together, the collaboration that they provide, it's amazing. I don't know that anything needed to be changed with respect to staggering terms. If you were to, if I had to make a decision today, I would say no, that it's not required and doesn't need to be changed. And so therefore, again, that's just from that perspective, how I've seen everyone already work together. I don't think that just switching it over to two years is gonna make that, I'm sorry, forty years of staggering is gonna make any difference to that, so.
Well, I don't foresee any situations for which there's gonna have to be a red thumb at the council where there's an emergency and you just have to have that knowledge right now. So I think the fear of having a knowledge turnover every two years and making it four years so you can retain that knowledge. There's a lot of people in this room who have been serving with the city, who aren't on board, they're here today, their phones are on, we can call them, we can rely on them. So having decades of experience every single time you come to every issue isn't always necessary. I think more, more so having it every two year, or two years will make sure that the people we elect continue to hold the values that we elected them for. And having that option every two years to say, hey, you said you were gonna do this, you said you were gonna fight for us, you said you were gonna be here and live in Louisville, keep Louisville, Louisville, your two years are up if you didn't do that. So I am a, I am a 100% keep it in two years and I'll keep my commitment to you to do what I said.
Thank you. Yes, this is an interesting question because I know on both sides of the story for folks. I've watched councils go out before and Mayor Horn had a brand-new council come in and try to get everybody on board, so I understand that point of it. And I do understand the traditionalists that say we wanna honor it that way, so I'm still on the fence a little bit about that and still getting some thought.
This is one of those questions where I don't think you're gonna go wrong either way. Everybody still gets to vote for everybody that sits on council. As far as the history goes, when the town was incorporated, civic club at that time wanted to do a town hall meeting, which was no council. They wanted to have the citizens meet once or twice a year, like they do in a couple of towns in New England, and decide on what they were gonna do for a budget and so forth. And the legislature told them, that's a no-no. So they went with manager council for him. As far as it isn't broke, I would agree with that. We've not had a problem with running this. But, you know, then again, if Edison had thought that, we'd still be burning kerosene. That wasn't broken either. It doesn't mean it can't be better. So I would say too, from a policy standpoint, if you want to do a bond, or we wanted to build a new town hall, two years is difficult to move those kinds of things through with the prospect of a snowstorm could change the entire council at that time.
Well, what I say, if it ain't, not to try to echo what he's saying, but if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I haven't made a decision on it myself about which way I'm gonna go with that, but we'll see.
I'm good either way. I think the thought of the council was to at least let the public take a vote on it to see what they wanted. We've done two years, it's worked. But also, if we get in a situation like was spoken about earlier, where we get a whole turnover and you've got brand-new people on here that don't have any past knowledge. So, you know, starting at four-year, a lot of municipalities have switched to that. But I was gonna say, either way, we just wanted to give it to the public and let them take the vote on it. You decide.
Most organizations benefit from having some continuity in leadership. And running every two years wears your leadership out. I estimate that I have walked 16 miles during this campaign, and I've got miles to go. I feel slightly better if we weren't facing such a large turnover in leadership, but my bottom line, I think yes, staggered terms.
I'm genuinely torn politician. On one hand, I'm gonna hate going up everyone's driveway every two years. I went to 800 homes to collect the signatures. And I understand everyone's reservations to switch into four-year, or to four-year terms. What if we elect a majority that is not gonna carry out the will of the people? And are we willing to live with them for four years if we are not happy? But at the same time, I think we need to trust ourselves, trust our judgment, and trust that we can elect good leaders to serve four-year terms. And so, as many people were gonna be upset that I said this, I am in favor of three-year staggered terms.
I don't have purpose.
For me, I would like to thank Dr. Ken Sattler, town council member here in Louisville. I had a great conversation with him last week about this conversation. At first, I was leaning towards the staggered terms for four years. The continuity, of course, would be great to have, the knowledge, you know, that can be passed down from council members through staggered terms. But one thing that I do agree with for two-year terms is that for one, whatever you plan to do, get it done. Don't make, you know, false goals that you can't get done in that two-year span. But also, there could really be a terrible council member or mayor who just does not cooperate in the meetings, just becomes an antagonist to the whole process for the town. And that person would be hard to remove if it's a four-year term. So I am for keeping it at two years. One thing that I do know is that we have a great town staff. Our town manager Stacy does a great job. And a lot of that continuity will come from the town staff themselves as opposed from the town council members' talent. Okay?
That's great. Well said, Billy. I think that's exactly, the staff really runs the town and the town council is there to, to provide some leadership and direction. So that's great. Also agree with what AC said. I'll tell you what I'm gonna vote. I voted this morning, so I voted against it. And I just think you come in together and you leave together, or you do a good job and you continue on for another two years. So thank you.
I'm being honest when I say I've thought about this a lot. And while the benefit of continuity is very valuable, as we as a council serve, we're serving you guys, we are also accountable to you all. If we're doing a good job, you all will continue to elect us for another two-year term. If we're doing a bad job for our great town, you all will elect us back into office. And that's just pretty simple. And therefore, I do plan when I go to vote to vote no to this referendum.
Thank you. Here, we're gonna begin with you on this next one. You talked about a charter amendment that's part of the election that's coming up. But there's been another situation that's been imposed upon council, as many of you are, most all of you are, I'm sure are aware, is that this year's elections are, for the first time in Louisville, partisan elections. You'll notice that I did not put anyone's party affiliation. You may share it or not share it as you see fit. But tell us what your thoughts are about the new state requirement of partisan elections for municipal governments that began this year.
I think it sent shockwaves to the community and it was probably unnecessary. It was a legislative move and things were going along well in the past. I don't, you know, it's very specific to Forsyth County. I don't know the details of the reasoning. I have some ideas why it did happen. But I think it's gonna work. I mean, I think if people, we have our political affiliations, but if people look to what you bring to the table, what kind of person you are, what kind of values you have, I think we can overlook that and we can come together as people, as citizens of Louisville. We all have feelings about what we want for this town. We want managed growth. We want the small-town feel. So we can overlook that. But it is an obstacle.
I believe in all the people that are sitting up here today. I truly believe that, you know, I would love to serve this town, but at the same time, you know, I don't think that the letter that goes right in front of your name just says a whole lot about who you are necessarily. I think this is about just knowing that the people that are up here are willing to serve the residents of this town and there's no need for partisan politics necessarily in municipal government like this. It doesn't mean that there can't be some understanding as to some perspective that the individuals have, but there's so much vitriol that sometimes goes with some of the partisan politic elements that it, on larger scale, you know, voting blocks. But in my mind, I very much don't feel like it's necessary, but, you know, just go on with the vote. I guess that's what I'm hoping for in this situation. Thanks.
Well, I am a registered voter. I think that really doesn't bear anything to do with the issues that face our town probably, more of a national stance on political platforms. But I really don't like that we had all the layer Republican, Democrat at the local level because, like some of my colleagues here have echoed, this isn't about national politics or identity with the political party, right? This is your vision for Louisville. And that should be your, your one guided light should be, what do I care about for the folks here in Louisville? And those issues aren't dictated by a political platform.
Thank you. I actually had this discussion with my husband recently too, because I, like I said, I've seen so many councils over the year and nobody looked at the R or the D or the I after their name. They came together for a cause. It's about serving our community. Your political affiliation should not come into play. We're not making those kinds of decisions like you would make on a national level. So therefore, it's about serving community, either your heart's in it or it's not.
Yeah, having said what I said about the staggered terms, I think in this case, you know, I'm not so sure that if it wasn't broke, it didn't need fixing. I'm not, I'm not really sure of the point of it. And honestly, every council we've ever had, everybody that's ever sat there, was affiliated with some party or the other. It just never, it was never to the forefront. So we worked together to do what we needed to do for the betterment of the town. We don't do, we don't write legislation here. We're not trying to coalition build, you know, to pass some big bill to impact the state. We pick up garbage. We build parks. We fix streets. All of those kinds of things that doesn't really require the party situations that are necessary when you move to the state, to the Fed, that kind of thing. So we'll live within it because that's the sandbox they put us in. But it's gonna be important, and my concern is, or my hope is, that everyone that's up here, regardless of who wins, understands that we've always had a tradition of working together.
I'm giving a, I'm giving a hint at it today now. I'm a Democratic. What I believe is, I don't care if you're Democrat, Republican, independent, y'all are gonna work together because we come together, come together for the town of Louisville and making Louisville a kidnap and fall down atmosphere. That's what I believe.
Well, I was a little surprised when it got pushed through, but I will say, I've always been unaffiliated, registered voter. And I do that because I've always been willing to reach across the aisle. And I think everybody up here just running will do the same, whether they have an R or a D in front of their name. But I went out by John and graciously, people in the community helped me get the signature so I could register and run and represent you. Hope that will happen again, so. But that's my take on it. I really, you know, I can't do anything about it, so I'm not gonna go out.
It certainly makes us unique. Not in six counties, other counties do not have partisan elections. And you ask yourself, what divides the parties at the local level? You start with certainly not the national stuff, but the tax policy, but for years, that's, that's been worked out. Regulation, there are different opinions of regulation. Who would benefit if regulation were reduced? As a developer, for example, who would benefit if you're in Forsyth County if the regulations around development were reduced? The partisan municipal elections are Jeff Stinker's idea, I am told. And possibly he has some ambitions here in Louisville. Possibly he thinks that voters will vote if you have an R beside your name. Voters will win.
Having previously served as an officer for both Edison and Forsyth County Republican Party chapters and spoken with them since 2016, I can tell you that the Republicans have always, you know, wanted to have partisan local elections. And at first, I was in favor of it, but as I got more involved with these local organizations, I saw that partisanship just did not help the conversation. When it comes to local government, it is about managing resources, it's about being the good neighbor, it's about doing what is best for everyone and working with everyone to accomplish the community's vision for itself. And so, I'm disheartened that we now have partisanship in our local elections, but as I canvassed the town, I went to Democrats, Republicans, and unaffiliated voters to earn their signature. And I just as well to work with anyone affiliated affiliation to do the best for our town.
I like to see party affiliations on judges. But town council, I don't see where it makes that much difference, but I don't shy away from it. I'm a Democrat. I'm always gonna be a Democrat. I voted for John Blas, who was a Republican in our state legislature, because he came to my door and asked for my vote. Agent was in the arm. I'm kind of partial to the winner.
Yeah, so in my honest opinion, I do feel that it was a move by the party that does run legislature right now in Raleigh. I think the move was to make sure that voters in rural suburban areas of North Carolina don't vote for a Democrat by mistake. That's honestly what I think is the reason for that change to move us all partisan. Like the folks said here, most of the issues here in Louisville will be nonpartisan. Everything in here is recycling, making sure people get their services on time, making sure that the town is clean and stays clean, as opposed to more of the partisan issues that we see on TV. But I do think it was, you know, a ploy. They think that folks in rural suburban areas will just vote for the Republican, but they don't know that Democrats will actually, are actually, or some of them will go to Republicans' door and make friends and build together, so.
Thank you. So Republicans and Democrats have been serving on this town council since 1991. They'll continue to work together. Your objective is to choose and elect the people that you think can collaborate and make good policy or good decisions for you. You can do that. You're smart enough. Whether we have an R or a D is inconsequential. The other thing, to my knowledge, I don't think anybody on this table put an R or a D on their sign. I think that's indicative of the quality of the people up here.
It's like I said toward the beginning of this candidates forum, we need people, candidates, elected officials who love Louisville. Not Republicans, not Democrats, not independents. People who love Louisville. And when we think about municipal government, we're really not dealing with partisan issues. Our events at the square, trash pickup, all of those items are not partisan issues. And so, when you think about who to vote for, please think about us as people who want to serve you rather than Republicans, Democrats, or independents.
I believe there's something like 535 municipalities in the state of North Carolina. Prior to this change, it's legislation forced upon the seven small municipalities here in Forsyth County, only five across the state. And that was Charlotte, and it's like Charlotte, Durham, large cities. And so, we've moved into the big leagues. And so we've moved into the big leagues. Now, while I think about the move, obviously, I've been a Republican since I signed up in high school 50 years ago at West Forsyth. I've been a left that I've served as council member that had nothing to do with it. As far as this move and having partisan politics now here in Lewisville and the other seven municipalities, I think it's the type of stuff that I try to avoid stepping in when I walk into my cow pasture.
We'll start this next one with you. There are a number of projects going on within the town, probably the most visible of which is the Great Wagon Road project. What challenges or concerns do you have, if any, about these projects that you've seen going on in the town?
So when I think about the projects and just think about how they're resolved and how they're monitored and how they're watched, I think about the challenges to the people of Lewisville to elect individuals up here that I believe all care about Lewisville as well, but the ones who can provide good transparent leadership, communication. As decisions have to be made on these type of items, you don't, not everybody can always get to the answer that they want, but to be able to clearly communicate back how the decision was arrived upon, those are really the challenges right now is putting the right four new people in there specifically to be of the six, but to put the right people back into the council or in the council and then to be able to work with the town staff as well. So I look at all the projects and just too many just to say that here's one to talk about for a minute and say, here's what I think we could do, so.
Well, the biggest challenge is going to be inevitable growth, right? So it's going to be the traffic control around Waggon Road, how we're going to actually direct that traffic, the follow the lanes. And then the actual use of the property, holding the folks who are really building on there accountable to our UDO codes and making sure that everything is built the way it's supposed to be. It's a daunting task and, you know, you have to be someone who can communicate and work well with property owners to make sure you protect their property rights, but at the same time, make sure those property owners respect the vision of our town. So those things, those things have to be done in a manner that everyone can be talked to in a respectful manner and someone who knows how to negotiate a little bit of deal, which I do that a little bit on a daily basis. So I think my skills in being able to talk to folks and bring people together are really going to help overcome the challenges we're having developing the wagon road.
Thank you. Yes, I'm actually glad that the event season has come to an end now because I know they're tearing up the back roads. So I hope that maybe by next year we'll be in good enough shape also that the events can continue on at the square. And also I'm sure, knowing the town as I have, they're going to be very thoughtful when they're planning what goes on on the Great Wagon Road and following that unified development ordinance is going to come into play on that. So I know wise decisions will be made and I know that growth will be controlled in the manner in which our staff and our council will do to serve our town.
Well, I'm very happy to see what's going on because it's infrastructure. I think one of the big challenges that we always face is the growth is going to come. And the problem is you can have a million people if you have the infrastructure for a million people. But if you have a million people, you have the infrastructure for 500,000, starts to get pretty dicey trying to go day to day. So the fact that we're building a parallel road prevents Schallford Road from becoming five, three lanes, four lanes, five lanes. We've got a lift station going in, out on Schallford Road. There's even issues like there's a brand new park at the State Historical Society which is nearly 300 acres at the end of Williams Road. So we need to be looking at this infrastructure, but beyond that too, we need to be careful about how we manage it because we need to, we need to be proactive in order to stay ahead of that because there will be growth coming. People have property rights and they will build homes on their land and so forth as we move forward.
Back in 1990, I think Lewisville had what, 6,000 people? Now we got 14,000. Lewisville's growing. But the wagon road, we didn't want the wagon road to be for all people, not just some people. Bring shops in there, make the shops affordable. You bring farmer markets in there, make it affordable, everybody. And that's my concern.
Well, I can tell you, so I work in Kernersville and I can tell you the place that I don't like going is South Main Street, alright? And the reason for it, it's like a mini Haynesville Boulevard. Here's what I can tell you, you know, when I have a vision for our town, I know we're going to grow, but it's a matter of how it grows and how you build the infrastructure. I can tell you, I don't want a Kernersville or Clemmons, okay? I want local entrepreneurs to move in when the Great Wagon Road is completed. I want local business owners so we can support them, support our community. That's what I'm looking for.
This project goes about 25 or 30 years. There have been hearings, there have been presentations. At one time there was this really cool model in Town Hall that just explained it all. I think that the process, there has been transparency by the town. I think the process has worked and it'll be okay.
Steve, I know everyone is in inconvenience whenever these projects get underway and we are looking at years for some of these things to be completed, specifically the Great Wagon Road. If elected, I would work with our town staff and with our contractors to ensure that these projects are being done in a timely manner so that way you all can get back to enjoying the town that you love and the sights that you enjoy, which is not traffic homes, not construction workers, but green spaces, events at the town square. And so my priority, if elected, would be ensure that these projects are being done in a timely manner.
I would like to understand the wagon road and its purpose. I haven't seen a plan. I've heard about this lift station. Questions that I have is how do we get to this point where the lift station was a surprise? If we had a civil engineer draw up a site plan, somebody has to figure out where it's going. But I look forward to taking a closer look at the project and saving ourselves some money if we can.
Yes, so the main thing that's important for me when it comes to these projects in the town is the communication with residents. A lot of times you can solve issues before they even begin if there's proper communication along the way. And so for the feedback that I've heard from residents, their issues seem to follow around if there are issues, just not knowing what's happening next, what are they waiting for next? And so as mayor, my role would be to bring those folks into the conversation. I think our town council does a great job right now with the updates and our monthly meetings, but that would be something that I'd love to do is keep everyone informed of the GWAR and make sure that we are on the same page. Also, I serve on Parks and Recreation Committee right now. One thing that we've done is, of course, they had to take some of the playground away from Schallford Square. We are working to have a new playground installed that's all-inclusive for all children from youth as well and, you know, go from there.
Thank you. I told you I'd do my homework. So earlier this week, I walked down the Great Wagon Road as far as I could till a big piece of equipment was about ready to run me over and turn around and walk back. I want to see it. I want to feel it. I want to understand it. I want to see how it's going. The Great Wagon Road is a transformational project in Lewisville. It's transformational. It's going to bring utilities into town for that commercial development, controlled commercial development, controlled residential development. That's been coming on for about 15 to 20 years to get a lift station out there back off of, on the other side of Schallford Road. It's a great project. It is so important to me that I dragged Tom Lawson out on a Saturday morning and he drove me around for three hours to look at the project. So I'll do my homework for you.
No matter how we feel about the projects that are going on right now in town, I can promise you one thing, Lewisville has a bright future ahead. I think the biggest challenge with our projects that are going on right now is thoughtful development because the Great Wagon Road will have parcels of land that people are going to want to come and develop on. And as a town government, we have to be very thoughtful in what is allowed to go on those parcels of land so that we can maintain a small local community here that feels like the one we currently have.
You should focus on questions sometime if it was asked.
It's been a while.
Projects such as the Great Wagon Road that is currently going on were a long time in making. As I mentioned earlier, the wheels of government turn slowly. That project has been in the works of being planned for over 20 years. The building that you're sitting in now started out probably 15 years ago in waiting stages. It takes a while to get these projects going. That's the reason we almost always have to have a vision of what the future holds for our town and start things today that I may not live to see come to fruition, but it needs to be started today or it won't get there.
Well, I think the important thing, I agree with Billy in terms of communication. I think when people see all this construction going on, people don't understand it. Sometimes they don't know where it's coming from. They don't know that it's been 25 years that this has been planned. And I think first of all, they need to understand that we don't have control over a lot of that, the timeline, that's 80% is the Department of Transportation. But here's what I have faith in. I actually read the comprehensive plan for the town and I encourage you all to take a look at that. I was so impressed that it was so thoughtful and so planful for all these years of where Lewisville is going. I mean, in terms of the land use, in terms of the development, in terms of words I picked up like having a lively downtown, I like that. Having more sidewalks, you know, okay, having more sidewalks and more mobility possibility, you know, for people to connect, so.
Give us more pressure a little bit later on. AC, we're going to start this next one, next one with you. We just got finished talking about projects that are projects that are underway within the town. What projects are not presently being undertaken that you would like to see within the town?
Thank you. That's a great question. My biggest concern is that we have a lot of land that's already zoned for residential and land that's zoned for agricultural. And we tend to see developers try to go active agricultural land because it's cheaper and then come to the council or the committee of the town to get that turned into residential. And so my biggest accomplishment will be, the entire time I served on the council, is to not let agricultural land get turned into residential. There's plenty of land might not be as inexpensive as a developer wants because it's zoned residential already. There's plenty of land already that can be developed into residential that needs to be done first before we think about taking any more farmland away from our community. Because we're an agrarian community. I love Conrad Road. I fought that fight out there to stop them from turning that into third acre lots all the way up and down there and near the farmland. And I'll continue to do that as your councilman.
Thank you. I hear that a lot from folks as well, AC, so that was a very thoughtful comment and I will go along with that as well. But I do think again, our town council and our planning boards, our residents, they all have opportunities to offer. I've got the fries over here who can tell you about every project that's going on in Lewisville, so when someone says they don't know, we do make information available for everyone. It is available out there, but it's again going with continued and thoughtful growth. That's what's going to benefit this community as well.
I would have to say for me is collector roads. I look around and I can't name one collector road that I've seen the DOT build since I lived here. All the collector roads we have are the ones that we're here to begin with. So I would like to see us try to pursue, if you could look into the horizon and see land that's currently made that might be in somewhere where you could use a road or wouldn't have to condemn anything right now to put those plans in place. The other thing I think we'd like to see is all of you, when this town began, they laid a vision out, they met, citizens met, councils met, laid out a plan for a library, laid out a plan for a new town hall, laid out a plan for a town square. And so then with that vision, successive councils had a mission to accomplish. We've accomplished all of those. I think we need to bring everybody together. This crowd tonight is, I'm really gratified to see it. I would say this, if an opportunity comes to participate, do it. I try to encourage people, get on the committee, get on board, run for office. And people will say, I don't feel I'm qualified. And no one is born without ability. I would say you just need people who care and people who want to be involved. And don't sell yourself short because the first time I held an office ever, I didn't know anything.
That's what I'm doing. I ran for office. I've talked to some of the voters out here and a lot of people say Lewisville is dark. They want lighting. They want some kind of type, some kind of lighting, some street lights or something like that out here. And this is what they're concerned about, you know? They want to get out here and they want to be able to walk the streets safely and everything because they don't see, they don't have the lighting, they don't have anything out here. So what I say, not just the lighting, but just keeping Lewisville that small-town atmosphere, but that's what they want. That's what they want, the lighting.
So some of the things I've heard since I've been on council, dog parks or a dog park, okay? So don't worry, we haven't forgotten about you. The second thing that we've heard is, you know, we have a lot of residential neighborhoods and I think, I think there's a little issue of excessive speeding in a lot of those neighborhoods. So council took, we changed a couple things. We've given that into the town staff to be able to go in and implement speed cushions. They still work with the emergency vehicles, but yet it'll help mitigate and slow traffic down when it's needed. You know, some other things too, James was mentioning the lights, just so you know, some of the lights are out due to the project with the Great Wagon Road, so hopefully we'll get those eliminated soon. And then last of all, we will have lights down the Great Wagon Road. So once that's completed, you'll have another sector. We're trying to make it pedestrian friendly in town.
This town needs a pool. It would be a benefit to every age group, every demographic. And I know the town staff is rolling their eyes back there thinking that, no, we can afford it. We've got this road going out too much, straight on the budget. And I'm not asking for a pool next summer. I know that's not realistic, but if we start the research and the planning now, we could have a pool. I've been told the pool has been considered and rejected as too expensive. Ladies and gentlemen, I grew up in one of the poorest places in the state and we had a pool. Everybody I've talked to about this goes on and on about their wonderful experiences with a pool. We can do it.
Not in the near term, but somewhere in the future, I would like to see roundabout at the intersection of Chickasaw and Robin Hood. My wife and I, we live in Robin Hood Forest, which is just off of Robin Hood Road. The Beltway is going to come through right next to our neighborhood and we've already seen accidents right at the entryway of our neighborhood where we go in and out of every day to go to work. I want us to find a way to get our motorists to slow down, but also just installing roundabouts where they need to go to make it safer. As more developers this way, we do need to think about additional motorists that are going to be on our roads and some that are not going to care about our traffic laws. But also a farmer's market. I would like to see a farmer's market for our home stayers and for the folks that are, you know, homesteading at home and want something to sell.
Yes, I think I've already mentioned the pool. Door-to-door canvassing and a lot of the young adults that grew up here, the children, their faces line up when you talk about a pool. And I belong to, I didn't belong to, they didn't have a membership. My grandparents went Casamere, Alabama, much smaller than those though. They had a large pool, I mean Olympic-sized pool. That's where I learned how to swim. That's why I got to be a water safety survival instructor in the Marine Corps because I already knew how to swim before I joined the Marine Corps. And we need to send the next generation of Lewisvillians out into the world knowing how to swim, so they don't wind up being as statistic. And let me tell you something, if you don't act now, escalation will clean your clock. We are looking at COVID, we are looking at 15 to 17% escalation.
So one new idea that I'm working on is the 40-40 Committee for Lewisville. If you guys go to billycarterjr.com, you'll find out more information there about it. Basically, what I've seen in Lewisville is that there are many millennials, Gen Z'ers, and Gen Alpha who I feel disengaged from the political process, even within their hometowns. And they don't feel that there's a person that can bring them into the conversation. So what I'm looking to do is start a nonpartisan committee for Lewisville. Please tell your children, your grandchildren, it will be a platform for us to tackle the issues that pertain to the next generation of folks in Lewisville. Where will your children live? Where will your grandchildren live? If they can't afford to buy a home in Lewisville when it's time for that to happen. So for me, the way we maintain the culture of Lewisville is to make sure that we have a plan for our children and grandchildren to be able to stay in this town as well. So billycarterjr.com.
I'll put another vote in for a pool, but that would be great. We've got a lot of very big, very important projects right now. But as has been said, dog parks, what hasn't been brought in are bike paths, railways, things like that. That's long-term stuff, but we got to be thinking about it. We need to be collaborative with it. You need to be able to, the town council needs to sit down and take that information. What do the people really want to have? It doesn't have to happen tomorrow. It doesn't have to happen next year, but the process begins today, so it comes back in the future.
In regard to short-term projects for our town, I feel that the town needs to focus on projects and bring our community together, like a farmer's market. I've always felt front of those are property would be a great location for a farmer's market. As far as long-term projects, I really feel that we have a lot going on with projects in the town right now. The Great Wagon Road, the Robin Hood Road Roundabout Project. And we're about to spend a lot of money out of our reserves to continue in funding the projects, such as the additions on the Great Wagon Road and our Robin Hood Road Roundabout. I feel that in regards to long-term projects, we need to transition as a town into a time where we pause on major projects in order to build back our reserves.
One thing that is dear to my heart, and the ones that have known me for years since we've acquired as a town this property that Barry Alice Warren gave to us, is out here in the open field in front of the building, I invented an all-inclusive playground for children. I don't think it's the town's responsibility necessarily to build this, to go for it. I know this would be different, but I'd like to see us involve foundations such as the Riddles American Foundation, the 63 Foundation, others like that to help us build that. And I think that that would be a desirable location. There's parking infrastructure already available here at this site and so forth. So that's a vision that I have, and I hope that we can certainly pull that off.
Did you repeat the question? It's been a long time.
It has been. What kinds of projects are not presently undertaken by the town that you believe the town should be considering?
Well, I think I do, I agree with Fred in terms of the playground. The community pool is also a great idea. Anything to do with playgrounds and this whole area, this center and the Jack Warren Park, I think that we could develop it more. And I think we need to bring more people here to take advantage of the facilities. I mean, I love walking around here. I mean, and I have to give credit to the people that from the town are in charge of maintenance. I mean, it's beautiful. It's excellent as you walk through the town. It's just lovely. So I would say playgrounds. I would say more playgrounds. And I'm going to go back to the comprehensive plan because they did mention playgrounds. You know, when the Beltway goes through, but I, okay, but that's going to be in another era of the Beltway. I understand it's going to be a long time. So I would say playgrounds.
Talking, giving a little bit of a comprehensive plan, but connectivity, mobility, safety are some of the things that are in there a lot. And so therefore, when I think of projects, I, you know, I think about creating more traffic downtown. I think about, so therefore, I go back to farmer's markets is one of the things that's on my mind. And then also just anything that creates connectivity, bringing more people, run groups, you know, any types of activity groups that can be held downtown, all those type of things. But also the safety elements with crosswalks, bike lanes, and then also some of the roundabouts that are going to be coming in the town's way.
We are at a difficult place in time. We're supposed to go until nine o'clock. I know we wanted to have a minute for everyone to have closing statements. If I ask another question, I'm not sure we're going to be able to get that done. Perhaps I can ask a question. You could maybe shorten your answers just a little bit. And then we'll do that, and then we'll go to closing statements. For the folks who are here, if your question didn't get asked, and it almost certainly did not, I'm sure the candidates would be happy to talk to you following the form once we're done, and so that you can address your questions to them directly. This question, Stacy will begin with you, but you're just going to get a little bit of a brief. It's a longer question than the answer needs to be.